Meeting called to order. Today is Tuesday, March eighteenth. It is now six oh five P. M. Town Council meeting in the Town Council chamber with eleven seventy Main Street. My floor, Brian. Jay, will you lead us through prayer?
We ask for the wisdom to make good decisions, to speak with confidence and listen with compassion, and to work together to create a better way of life for the people of West Warwick. Amen.
Jay, would you just in a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Dennison?
Here.
Councilman Lachardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President Williamson?
Here.
And the President Goblin?
Yes.
Forward is declared. I would like to make a motion if I could, and I'm sure that the superintendent would love to stay all night, but she was here last night. If we could move item I five forward at this time?
Move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Round I, firing.
I'll take the start on that. This is a resolution requesting the General Assembly enact enabling legislation to authorize the town of West Warwick to finance through bonds some of our school building plans. Obviously, those aren't definitive yet. However, this is a step that's required by the Rhode Island Department of Education for their process. So essentially, this is asking the General Assembly to put together the legislation. And this identifies, it leaves things open for us to to have and adapt to our plan. But it lays out the minimum reimbursement that's current for this year at sixty-four point six percent. And also, as a maximum bond amount, we used what our stage two submission total was of seventy-one million dollars. Obviously, that does not say that we're going to take that amount in a bond, but it matches our stage two submission for those planning purposes.
Any questions for Ma? Any other comments?
No, I mean, we've received, we've received updates on these right through, again, as part of the process. This stage two submission was on February fourteenth, and this just needs to be done. And the, it's the legislature that's requiring it done at this time because you have to get on their calendar or it won't get done for this, this session.
When do you see an answer for this?
For this legislation? I assume this will, I don't know that there's an answer that will need to be. I assume it will go through. We still have to wait for, for responses from RIDE for the application that went in. So that's in the May timeframe. So we have some time. But I, I know that our delegation and the speaker himself suggested we get legisla, request for legislation in as soon as possible. Just because as we've seen that happen before, it takes time to, to get through that process.
Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you're welcome to say.
Enjoy your meeting. Take care.
Boy, that was a no, huh? Yeah.
Consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the February fourth meeting, the February twelfth meeting, the February twenty-fifth meeting, and the March fourth meeting.
Move the consent agenda.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Business licenses. Request from Pipe Factory R. I. LLC for an amplifier loudspeaker permit and theatrical performances shows and exhibition license.
Do we move them all at once?
Sure.
Move all the business licenses over with?
I just want to make sure that that, that one is going to be passed, subject to fire and police.
As all.
And, and it's a for specific dates. This is not a blanket. It's for specific dates, but absolutely needs to meet all the requirements. And the date is in.
This Friday and Saturday or Sunday, Sunday?
Oh, isn't that, okay.
Yes, it's close. So.
So are you not comfortable?
So, um, we are in discussion. So we got a hold of somebody after four thirty this evening about this. We were unaware of it. And so we have a few things that we need to discuss.
So will, will you let us, you have a point first on this, correct? So you just?
First, I, yes.
Will you?
I will let the.
Just let us know if it's a yes or a no.
Yes.
Please, because right now it's.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. Was it subject to the fire? Thank you.
Maybe we need to look at that process because this, this is dated. Actually, I don't see a received stamp or, it's dated two twenty-two.
I believe that Iowa sends them out. Her practice has always been that she sends them out to the departments when she receives them. I'll follow up with her on that particular one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, so any motion to move?
So, motion to move?
We do have separate, which can do.
The, the business, the business licenses, G zero one, two, three, A through I.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion? Any public discussion on the licenses?
No, the, the only thing I did notice on, on G two is that the license that they put in, in the backup expires in June. So I assume that we pay attention to that too. And, and we have a file that will remind us that we have to go talk to them or they have to renew.
You're talking about their Department of Health license?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think it's a twenty-two license that expires in June of twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Appointments and resignations. Request from Giuseppe Lanzalatta for appointment to the West Warwick Two Hundred and Fiftyth Commission.
Move the appointment.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion?
No, enthusiastically. I know he kind of teaches a history of West Warwick class.
Is the school desert knee on that panel?
Perfect.
And the second one will be the remaining public agency.
And he, he's an excellent candidate. He's very involved with the community, schools, education. He would be, I guess, that history.
Yes.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Request from Renee Grandchamp for appointment to the West Warwick Two Hundred and Fiftyth Commission.
And again, move that appointment.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion?
Renee has a long history in West Warwick as well. A family that has lived here for a long time. So I'm thankful that she wants to be part of it.
This board will be complete, all right? Yes, we're there. First meeting technically scheduled for March thirty-first. Actually, we'll be posted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
February twenty twenty-five monthly finance report.
Good evening. Current year tax collection total fifty-two million ninety-five thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents, which is seventy-eight point two nine percent of the budget amount for current year taxes. We have collected three quarters and are trending slightly ahead of expected. Prior year tax collections total six hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and forty-seven cents, which is equal to forty-eight point four one percent of the budgeted amount. This line has been adjusted for the two hundred and six thousand three hundred and thirty-four thousand and six cents sixty-day rule and accrued back to fiscal year twenty-four. This line will increase as we get closer to the tax sale that's scheduled for May ninth. Overall, the revenues are at seventy-three point six two percent, which is higher than expected at this point of time in the year. This is mainly attributed to strong tax collections and higher-than-expected finance building and town clerk revenues. Expenditures are trending under budget at sixty-two point nine three percent. This is three point seven four percent below the expected sixty-six point six seven. Most of the operating departments are running on target or slightly above budget. A budget amendment will be proposed in April to reallocate funds set aside for negotiations to the respective departments. The Civic Center has current operation, operating expenditures of four hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and four cents. I do have an update. Lori had posted her invoices after I did this report. So their current revenue out of February now is four hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and one dollars. So that puts them, she's like right on target where she's supposed to be.
That's a better answer than what you have in your memo.
Right. Yes. So that happened after I had to give everything to Sarah. So just wanted to update you on that. The bank balance as of February twenty-eighth was thirteen million four forty-two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-four cents. We earned an additional ninety-four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents in interest on the three million dollars and in the interest-bearing sweep account with Citizens Bank for the month of January. And we have also earned four hundred and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-three cents in interest on our funds invested at Sembal Bank as of January twenty twenty-five. I did want to note in the audit, which I sent out to everyone today, that our investment revenue for twenty twenty-four was about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that was a, it was a good year.
That's a nice, yeah.
Yeah. Can't count on it forever, but had taken advantage while we could.
How are interest rates now that you're getting?
I'm still locking in around four percent. So, not bad.
Yep.
Still hanging in.
And then one, one, two, five.
Right?
Oh, God. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Crystal?
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, you're welcome.
Cancellation of taxes in the amount of three hundred and thirteen dollars and thirty-one cents is requested by the tax.
I think I'm going to ask this actually to be tabled. If you notice, that's the amount that's requested in the cover memo, but the attachment supporting it was at one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. So I don't think there's any big rush for that one way or another. So if we could table that.
Make a motion to table. Second. Move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Approval of live scan fingerprint computer requirement.
Move resolution.
Second.
Hi, good evening. Looking for authorization to purchase a new live scan fingerprint computer. Our current live scan system is beyond its service life expectancy and its hardware and software is no longer supported by Thales LiveScan, which is the sole source provider of that entire system. I'm respecting, respectfully requesting authorization to accept a quote that was attached in the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This also includes two years of additional warranty after the first year as well as customer support. The funding source for this request would be the police detail expense account.
Any questions on that?
No, but you're really actually taking people to Coventry?
Right now, we fixed that.
Okay.
We were able to do a patch through our I T people and some of my officers and some members of the Attorney General's office as well as Thales LiveScan.
Pads and thumbprints.
We're never going to do that. We're never going to do that. But for several weeks, we were transporting prisoners and arrestees to the Coventry Police Department, which is obviously an inconvenience for our officers, Coventry Police Department. They were gracious enough to host us, but it is an inconvenience and i- there is an officer safety element to it. Now, we're, we're moving people in and out of police cars, transporting them with Ken Kassan unnecessarily. So we want to get ahead of this. We want to make sure that we replace it. I do know that the build time and delivery time may be three or four or five months. Right now, we're okay. But it, it's only a matter of time before the machine fails again and, and they're not going to work on it. It's, it's beyond its life expectancy.
Why so long? Because I mean, I assume this is a fairly common need for every.
I, I, I can't answer that, but unfortunately, they're the only game in town. So they kind of have us.
Okay.
We're not the only department instead of having issues with that particular company. But unfortunately, like I said, they're a sole source provider of that, of that system.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Resolution authorizing the filing of Rhode Island Small City's Community Development Plot Grant Program Application.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second. Elaine?
Hi, Elaine.
Good evening.
Hi. Just looking for approval for the C D B G application.
Just out of curiosity, I know Highland Street's on there. Was that called Sidewalks?
I do not believe any included sidewalks on Highland, correct?
No, but I'm glad this came up.
I don't want to go.
Not really. I just got a email this afternoon from Rhode Island Energy. They're running a new gas line down Highland Street in twenty twenty-six. So, uh, are they actually left engine?
The sidewalks?
They'll pave it. They'll allow them to pave it because they run a whole gas main network.
So what, what I'm?
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't put in the.
Let me just clarify. So if they're going to run that gas line, obviously, we might be able to work with them. Can we take some funds of this and put sidewalks in? That is a bus route and a lot of foot traffic from, not from the Main Street. They go up over Highland, down to Penix. Not so much as trying to stay off Main Street. And we have had a couple of accidents over there. And there's a lot of sidewalks caving in. And let's just put it this way. It's probably more landlord. And if you look on the left-hand side, coming from the top of the hill, going down to Main Street, the left-hand side's all walls.
Zero.
And the landlord's not going to fix that. And on the right-hand side, I can't even tell you who owns from the corner up to the first. It might be the house, but there's guardrails and everything all bent over, everything over there. So, you know, I was just, if, if that happens, can we work together with them?
Yeah, so the application will go in as pretty much a blanket request for Penix infrastructure. And then we can choose where it goes, as long as it's, it's within the district.
Oh, good.
There is a few more streets involved now which were taken off of C D B G, which is El Center, Central Bridge.
Well, we, because we, have we gotten an answer from last year yet? Because that, didn't we put that in last year? That, that whole area?
It was not approved last year.
That's right.
And then since then, the block loops have changed. We went from twelve qualifying to six. And I hope that doesn't last very long. That happened about twenty years ago. We had to deal with it for two years. And then we went back to different data. Because I don't believe the current data is accurate.
Is that census data, really?
It is.
Really?
It is.
Oh.
It just doesn't make sense. We would go from twelve to six.
No, that's crazy, actually. Oh.
Any other questions for Elaine? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you for the work you do, Elaine.
You're welcome.
Your business O five has already been considered. Your business O six, request from the Fire Department to purchase forty-one self-contained break attacks.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second. Chief?
Hi. So a few years ago, we recognized that we were going to be losing several air packs in the next few years. So we've been compiling the information. We submitted grants. We were successful in getting a FEMA grant that will provide the town with four hundred and twelve thousand and change dollars for the purchase of these forty-one air packs. We've put money into capital and we have money in our SCBA account this year to be able to meet the co-pay for these SCBA. So I'm asking your permission to go ahead with that purchase.
Any questions for the chief?
Week time on that?
About twelve weeks. Twelve weeks. And, and this particular air pack, we, we had a committee that met in the fall. They kind of have had their eyes on this particular air pack. It had not met the N Y O S approval yet. It was in the testing phase. And in the beginning of this year, it was approved. So.
Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Great. Request from the Fire Department for purchase of a new fire rescue truck. Sorry.
Okay. Move the resolution.
Second.
Hey, so we are going to be, we've been looking at buying a rescue for a while. We did get in the contract that we're putting a rescuing service weekdays starting in July of twenty twenty-six. In order to have a full fleet of new rescues, we were looking to get another rescue. This, I sent out appraisal. This rescue is an old box that has been refurbished and put on a new chassis. It, by purchasing this way, we're going to save about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from what the brand-new custom chassis would have been. So we have money left over from that, from the lease, the multi-department lease. And we have additional funds in the Rescue Recovery Fund to cover the difference.
Any questions to chief? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Now I know why you started that back row a couple of weeks ago perked up when at least the bottom was up here getting.
Request from the Fire Department to reallocate funds from ambulance billing to the Community Paramedicine Program.
Move the resolution.
Second. Move in second, chief?
Okay, thank you. I, I did send something out. A community paramedicine program has really been very successful in town. We've heard from the Department of Health and other state leaders how, how much our department is actually leading in the state. We have Lieutenant Ryan Simko with us today, whose idea this was. You know, his, his drive in getting this program going and making it successful was a credit. You know, brings a lot of credit on the department and the town through his hard work. I did send something out. I, I have Lieutenant Simko here. If you have any questions, I'd like to bring him up if you have any questions for him.
If I have any question?
I do.
You know, why don't you come on up, Ryan? And, and actually, this is a program that is very highly regarded. People like Ken Hospital are thrilled with it and, and the partnership. So tell us what you think and how it's going and, and where you see it going, Ryan.
It's going very well. As of, from twenty twenty-three, July twenty twenty-three to present, we've enrolled over a hundred and sixty patients. Of those patients, we had sixty-one patients officially graduate from the program. And of those patients, they had an eighty-two percent reduction in nine-one-one responses post-graduation, which equates to roughly two hundred and fifty responses at a cost savings of almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because every time we do respond, it, it costs the town money to respond on every emergency response. Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement rates are abysmal. It's our three, three, four hundred dollars. Yeah. We're averaging about four hundred dollars on return per response, and it's probably costing us nineteen hundred to two thousand dollars a response. So it's definitely saving money theoretically. We also, we've been working with a lot of our high utilizers in our most vulnerable populations to try to get them the help that they need. We're trying to try to get legislation passed this year. It's going to be a little difficult with the, the climate of Medicare, Medicaid. But the only way this program is going to be sustainable is, is for the towns to fund it and through legislation through billing.
And, and I, we did see on, on the previous that C D B G has some money in there, about seventy-eight thousand dollars, which certainly helps. But you're right, Medicare and Medicaid are clearly not where they need to be and, and not sure where they're going at this point. So I, I can't see it getting better real quick. So the, the, I'm not sure the public realizes how much you guys do and how much you are out there and how much that saves and is meaningful to the people who might not get the help they need otherwise. So thank you very much, Chief Roan, Eric, for doing what you do. Yeah.
Great job. Very innovative.
It's awesome. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Discussion action. Engineering of the apparatus floor at Station, Fire Station One.
It's not, it's not, the chief just wanted a discussion.
Yeah, it's a discussion action. So we were successful in getting a, a state infrastructure grant for public safety. That grant has three stages. One is the roof of the, the complex. The second part of that is the floor at Station One. We had core sampling done about a year and a half ago. It indicated that six of those panels are, have deteriorated where they need to be replaced. So this is to get the engineering drawn up in order for us to go out for an R F P. That's what I'm asking for, the chief. So just from history, yes, I think Fire Station One, the floor has been for us numerous times. We've approved and approved and approved, but I don't know where it's ever gone. I don't know if it's ever been engineered. I don't know, I know Chief Barris was on that. Yeah. And so there were core samples done before when we started to look into this. Because I always thought the floor was done. So. That's what I'm asking. It's by understanding, the last time they did it, they milled down a little bit and poured a little bit on top and they tried to seal it. You know, it wasn't successful. And the core sampling is showing further deterioration. We, we didn't have a base to go from. That was about ten years prior to this core sampling.
Okay.
And, but no one could come up with where those core samples were. So where the results were. So we, you know, going on this, this is the recommendation from the engineers, the structural engineers. And we're following through with that.
And obviously, it's, it's a big concern because we have things below us.
Yeah, yeah. So we have a lot of equipment below us. And the, the original quotes that we received, we added funds in the grant submission to do the work underneath that needs to get done, to move things out. And there's a lot of pipes that are attached to the ceiling, which is the floor, you know? So that all needs to get worked. You know, it's all work that needs to get done. So that will be inclusive in the engineering.
So I guess I would ask, what is the specific request right here? Because there's nothing attached. There's not, there's no.
Yep. I thought I had attached the actual engineer's quote from February nineteenth. I believe that was one of the patents that I sent.
I think we saw it in emails sometime. Was it not attached here?
It's not here.
Oh, all right.
So that, yeah.
So where's our action, I guess, is the question.
And, and the fact that that's not attached, does that?
So the estimate for the work is fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And that includes the slab design and plan development for reinforced concrete slab. Slab will be designed according to the Rhode Island State Building Code, A H, S H T O. Not sure what that abbreviation is. Wheel loads will be greater than that same abbreviation, H L ninety-three for fire apparatus wheel loadings.
So you're, so you're asking for the, the, a request is for fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars to do the engineering associated with the need to repair and or improve the, the floor at Station One?
And this is part of the grant. It's a fifty-fifty match. So it really. Excuse me. Are you asking for the money or are you asking me to go up the bid? I'm, I'm asking for the money to pay for the engineering.
Yeah.
I want to be sure.
Yeah.
And then the engineering will allow us to go up for the R F P.
And the engineer is, I don't remember.
Commonwealth Engineering.
Okay, so the request is for fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars to be paid to Commonwealth Engineering for
For the engineering.
Engineering associated with replacing, repairing the floor for the Station One. Got that, Sarah? That's my, the resolution that I moved.
Second. Move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You had a big wish list, though.
All right. Request from Derry Middle School Players for program advertisement.
Move the request from Derry Middle School Players.
Second.
Move in second. I think it's usually we did, I think, we did the fifty or the hundreds last time, but.
You don't usually do the full?
We usually do the full.
Yeah, do the full page. Yes. Yeah, two hundred dollars. Yes.
Are we going to Photoshop one of these on somewhere in there? I know we haven't updated picture.
So it's really one.
I'm good. I'm good.
It's really one. We can do the, we can take the room.
Marks. I mean, in the past, we've had to hire a photographer. Can't, we, we have a meeting where we dress up. We just have to be take a picture on the phone. Just so we have an updated, just so we have an updated picture. So, I mean, right, instead of having a whole it's twenty twenty-five, we can take a picture.
Just for the next week.
That's fine.
Just get them.
All right. Just remind everybody. Because it's been, it's been over. How long has it been on now?
December twenty-third.
Yeah, so a year and a half now, a year and three months. So, yeah. Time for you to get the pictures.
It's so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry, I was thinking about it. Like, we still use.
No, I was thinking about how we kept Photoshoping it, yeah.
Oh, my God, you guys.
We had his head.
They added hair to my head. Not in a good way. It was like, like. Like George Costanza. All right, upcoming appointments.
Derry's Board of Review Appointment to fill a vacancy in all check-in.
If I may, just that this actually says it has to begin by March twenty-first. That's Friday. So we might want to make sure that they know that?
Oh, probably not tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. No problem.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Well, so it's been on the last agenda when I wasn't here and I had to send a hand.
Anyway.
All right, we'll get it. Um, so we're used to order review appointments to fill a vacancy as a regular member for a year term. Tax assessment board review, appointment to fill a vacancy for a three-year term. School building committee, tree warden, recreation committee, West Fork two hundred and fiftieth. I'm happy to say it's filled. Um, the Texas River Authority, purchase fill a vacancy for an unexpired term ending June twenty twenty-sixth. Upcoming town council meetings for your request. I've added your upcoming meetings to the agenda. We have a budget workshop on March twenty-fourth, a budget public hearing on April first, a regular town council meeting on April first, a budget public hearing on April eighth, and a regular town council meeting on April twenty-second.
Can I, I kind of know we brought up briefly last night, but I just want to like iron down so to make sure that we just discussed when we're actually going to vote on the budget and we discussed mail, May, whatever the first, Tuesday is May. And I just wanted to see if we could iron down a date for when we're going to vote on that, just so I can put it down and we make sure that everybody is able to do it. Originally, we discussed last night at the budget hearing, it was going to be the sixth, so the thirteenth, twentieth, or twenty-seventh. Is that something we can discuss?
Um, I think that Christian would need to be part of that discussion because she has some requirements that she has to.
Yeah.
And May twentieth, I meant to hear, so.
I mean, the thirteenth, the thirteenth, the thirteenth. We don't, I mean, this.
No, I'd rather have Sarah be you.
No, so we did the thirteenth. I mean, because that, that meeting, it would just be that, I guess, right, instead of the meeting?
Well, let's see what instructions, Kristen.
Are you just, are you going that whole week of the sixth?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I mean, it's, it's really based on how the vote goes, really. If, if you, if it doesn't, you don't approve it on the thirteenth, then I, I have to, I think we're back to the drawing board. I, I gotta figure out what happens after that. But, but the fact is, I think what, uh, basically saying is he's not here on the sixth. So we should, so should we not, should we move that meeting? From the sixth to the. I mean, it's not set in stone yet, but. Oh, I'm asking you. Then it'd be two weeks in a row, or do you move it to the thirteenth? You know.
Um, it's completely up to you guys. If you have other businesses that you'd like to address on May sixth that you want to meet about, um, then you could still meet on the sixth, but we would have to have an additional meeting on the thirteenth to vote on the budget. So.
And we're going to have conflicts because I would be attending a conference leaving at noon on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Not that you need me, because I'm opposed, but.
I agree with that.
And I could deal, deal. Could I go to April twenty-nine?
Can we do that?
No.
Nope, we won't be able to advertise in time.
Yeah, the sixth was pushing it.
What if we, what if we did Wednesday, the fourth, Wednesday, the fourteenth?
Monday, the twelfth.
You're here. Is there any.
I, I think Monday's.
Or any of that. So why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't we all agree that maybe the sixth isn't going to work and the thirteenth is now not going to work? Sarah, why don't you, um.
I just have to check the calendar. You want me to go check? I can work it out.
Mondays are tougher for me.
We have plenty of time.
Should we just give our availability to, to Sarah?
Let's, let's do that.
Maybe tomorrow, so that way she can work on.
And, and we could discuss it at our next meeting. There's, there's enough time to, to take, take care of that. So it does not any sense of urgency, but we certainly, I agree with what you just said. We all should be here.
Yeah, all of them.
I'll need to know by the evening of the eighth, once, as long as we conclude our public hearings on the eighth and we've decided on a budget, I need to quickly get everything done and to DM up by that Friday, because I'm off.
April first, that next meeting, right?
Okay. Monday night is your workshop, your next workshop, but April first.
Oh, we can discuss it there, too. That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Next Monday on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, we can decide that. That's fine, yeah. So we'll discuss it at the workshop on Monday. That's fine.
And in the meantime, I'll check to see.
I'll just, I'll just shoot you over a bunch of dates and then just find a date that everybody's, that everybody can be here, including the town manager, plus.
Yeah, everyone can let me know when they're not available. That's probably the most.
There's a reason they're only on the. Well, available up till second P M, so.
I'll shoot you an email tonight. Show me the dates on that, no way.
That's the only night.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The seventh is no pants day. According to Mike Ellender, that could be awkward.
Yes.
If somebody follows it. Not a, not a voting requirement.
Yeah, and then.
Can't see me anywhere unless they send a pledge.
Well.
Only during the pledge in the, uh.
But, but then we'll, after the public, after the public hearings, we'll still have it. Then after that, we had a, a time where we discussed what we want to add and stuff like that, too. So that's going to be in between there, right?
Again, so, so if it was going to be set for the sixth, anything after the sixth, I, I assume works. Yes.
Yeah, because it's not like the deadline, not, not July, but there's not a specific deadline.
Because you're not here all week.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll just tell you right now, I'm good. Anytime. The only thing I have, uh, the seventh I can't do, but Jay's not here anyway. So that's the only thing I have in the entire month. So we're eliminating that entire week of May, Monday, May fifth.
Still going to have a council meeting.
Okay.
I'll send you the multiple ones that days I can, then I'll let Sarah pick a day from that. I don't care if they're not.
Perfect. We can always get an hour. Exactly. For the next meeting.
Yeah.
And that's just letting you know it works. All right. Um, public forum.
Public comment. Any public comment? Hearing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?